Good morning. My name is Sterling Kega, Chairperson of the Authority. I'd like to call to order the August 7th, 2024 Public Hearing of the Hawaii Community Development Authority. The time is now nine oh three.
I can do this part. Thanks Chair. The Hawaii Community Development Authority is holding today's public hearing both virtually on Zoom and in person. The Zoom link details were included in the public hearing notice. Therefore, members of the public are welcome to join us on Zoom or at the physical meeting site at the American Brewery Building, 547 Queen Street, second floor boardroom, Honolulu, Hawaii, 968, 3. The HCD communication staff is hosting the Zoom questionants of this hearing. Once this public hearing begins, everyone will be muted for clearer audio. Board members, if you have any comments or questions, please unmute yourselves to speak. It is important that all individuals clearly state their name each time prior to speaking. If you are providing verbal public testimony, your name will be called accordingly. If you are attending in person, when your name is called, please come to the front of the room. And if you are attending virtually, please turn your video on only while providing your testimony. In either case, please clearly state your name and affiliation and proceed with your testimony. All testimony will be limited to three minutes and will be accepted only on matters directly related to the public hearing subject. If the Authority's connection for the remote hearing meeting is lost, the hearing will be recessed until the connection is restored. If the connection cannot be restored within thirty minutes, the hearing will be reconvened Thursday, August 8th at nine AM at the same physical location as virtual Zoom as today's hearing. Thank you.
The record reflect that the following Kalailoa numbers are present. So Vice Chair Tracy Nishii here. Secretary Peter Apo. Melissa Miranda Johnson.
Here.
Mark Anderson.
Here.
Member Tim Strikes.
Here.
Mary Alice Evans.
Here and alone.
David Ray is excused and Mikiyala Lindstone.
Ew.
You.
Chair, we have coral.
Individuals from the public who have requested to provide verbal public testimony on a specific agenda item are on standby and will be permitted to provide testimony respectively. Would counsel for the applicant make their appearances at this time?
Sorry Chair, we'll need to do that. I'm going to dispense with that.
Okay.
Now I'll take the next part. Legal basis and purpose. Today's hearing is being convened under the provisions of Chapter fifteen dash two one five Kalailoa Community Development District Rules and Chapter fifteen dash two one nine Rules of Practice and Procedure Hawaii Administrative Rules and Section two sixteen E dash five point six Hawaii Vice Statutes to Consider the Following Matter: Amendment of the Kalailoa Community Development District Rules, HCR Chapter fifteen dash two on five and the Kalailoa Master Plan. The Kalailoa Master Plan was adopted in two thousand and six and the Kalailoa Community Development District Rules were last amended in two thousand and twelve. Among the proposed plan and rule amendments include updates to land use transit zones, thoroughfare plans and conceptual regional access plans. New permit types and other updates will streamline the permitting process processes and increase regulatory predictability and consistency. Minimum parking requirements are being eliminated to align with the city and county of Honolulu policies. Language is also being added to Black Act two twenty-one, Session laws of two thousand and twenty-three, which amends HRS Section two sixteen E dash thirty-three to require the Authority to consider climate change, sea level rise and climate resilient development in the design and siding of buildings in the district. The Authority is conducting today's public hearing to present the rule amendments and collect public testimony. There will be no decision making on the proposed amendments today. Legal notice, the public hearing notice was published in the Maui News on Thursday, July 4th, 2024, and in the Honolulu Star and Press, the Garden Isle Hawaii Tribute Herald and Whistling today on Friday, July 5th, 2024. Here.
Let me briefly explain our procedures for today's public hearing. First, HCD's staff will present its report. Following that presentation, board members will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide comments. Finally, we will take public testimony in the order that individuals have signed up. Individual comments will be limited to no more than three minutes. Only members of the Authority will be permitted to ask questions of the public. Since each Authority member has or will be given a copy of any written testimony that you may have provided, please refrain from reading your written testimony and instead summarize your comments in the time that you have available. When you are called, the communication staff will unmute your mic, clearly state your name and any organization that you are representing. I will be acting as the presiding officer for this hearing. Are there any questions as to our procedures? Okay. With no questions, we will now begin our proceedings. HCD's Director of Planning and Development, Ryan Tam, will now present the staff's report.
Hi. Good morning Chair Kega, board members. And um. I'll start. First of all, before I start, I want to thank, you know, acknowledge kind of the hard work of current and former staff and consultants, you know. Charlie, Nancy, Sari, Janet, Greg, and of course our AGs, Kevin and Kelly, all contributed a lot, a lot of time and effort into these, as well as previous staff, Janice, and then also our consultant team, Tordi Ngallas, who helped get us to this point. So we're certainly very appreciative of their efforts. Um, if I may, I have a presentation, a few slides that we'll be sharing. Yep. So again, uh, this, this morning, we'll start with the Kalailoa Master Plan and Rules update. Uh, there's an era photo of the district. Again, um, this process, uh, just for quick background, you know, this process has been underway for a long time. I think we started in two thousand and twenty. Um, the, we're bringing our consultants on board. Uh, maybe even before that, the, uh, board, you know, established permitted interaction groups, two thousand and twenty-one. We had board presentations, community meetings, two thousand and twenty-two, additional presentations and community meetings last summer. Um, we went to the Small Business Review Board hearing in December. And since then, we've had a lot of, a lot of input from the stakeholders in the community. Um, and so we've been actually working to address a lot of the, uh, a lot of the concerns and incorporates anywhere. So the draft that we have now, both of the plan and, and the rules, um, is actually quite a bit, uh, different. Uh, we made a lot of edits from last summer. So it's been a long way. Um, what, one of the key inputs that we've done, um, is incorporate in the draft master plan, incorporate a lot of expanded information about the culture and culture of the area. Um, so we wanted to make sure to recognize that in the documents. So here, this view shows the historic Alahale, the trails, um, as shown in an eighteen twenty-five map by, uh, Waukegan. In a small language of it. So again, we can see the district, we can see the district, the, uh, ranch data. Um. Here on this slide, nineteen oh two, a map shows the Sisal Fields. Um, again, the plantation history is also very important on this area. And the establishment of the Ola, Laun Railway Land Company, uh, rail line up at the Malka, between the boundaries. Um, can I? Chair, we're meeting on number of poll, whoever else is in.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. That's better. It's white light. Sorry.
Okay. So again, um, the plantation history, uh, Eva Sugar Mill, uh, Eva, Eva Villages is nearby and the Sisal Fields, uh, which I guess we're used to developing, uh, that was all the big important to the development of Kalailoa. Um, and also, uh, we understand that sinkholes were very important. Uh, this is aerial view, pretty amazing from nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen twenty-eight. Um, you can see the, uh, the sinkholes were actually, um, the ecosystems. Um, and the native whines used it for sustenance just as, as they use the fish ponds. So it's a technology was there. Uh, of these two, uh, the two black dots in the center, one on the right is actually Maori Pond, uh, that we've talked about um, in the past. And, um, it's also been pointed out that some community groups have expressed interest in actually elevating and preserving this issue of the sinkholes. Um, of course, Everfield, uh, World War Two. The development of the Everfield Maori mass. So initially, the, uh, this base was developed as a, a mast, maori mast for dirt balls, blunts that were supposed to cross the Pacific. Um, and then it grew into a base. And it's also, uh, we're recognizing the importance of the Eva Battlefield, which was the first, uh, point of, uh, attack for the Japanese on December seventh, eighteen forty-one. So, uh, the area is listed, uh, on the register. So this view is from nineteen forty-two looking Malka, uh, Makai. So in the master plan, um, a lot of the concepts and the vision, uh, that was developed in previous years, we've kind of maintained those. Again, the three main pillars, uh, core, creating social value, um, um, with housing connectivity and open space, um, focusing on, also focusing on economic development and employment, uh, again, creating the infrastructure to support new industries and jobs. And then lastly, balancing development. So again, designing, uh, the community for sustainability and socioeconomic equity. And the key way we do this, uh, is actually through, um, the twenty-minute city. Um, and just as in a, uh, brief introduction into what this is, the concept of a twenty-minute city, you have, um, your ordinary daily needs within a five-minute walk. So that's, um, about a quarter mile. So that you can see in the upper left-hand corner. And then in the, in the broader uses, within twenty-minute walk, that's about a half mile, uh, half to three-quarter mile, you would have, um, you know, more uses. So more retail schools employment, you know, as opposed to maybe your neighborhood grocery stores. Um, within a twenty-minute bike ride, um, you would have more, uh, regional, uh, activities. So that's, you know, access to culture, medical facilities, regional shopping or entertainment. Again, this is a, uh, about three miles, again, easy twenty-minute bike ride or, you know, on transit shuttles. Um, so the big, again, the big goal of all this is how, how can we design a community to be more sustainable, conserve resources, use less energy again for transportation, um, which again also affects housing costs. So again, housing plus transportation, that all goes into the cost of living. Um, the lower right-hand corner, you can see this thing, it is an example from, uh, North Bethesda, Maryland. And, um, we have a lot of, uh, kind of examples of, you know, more contemporary, um, idealized kind of urban communities and they're kind of sprinkled throughout our, throughout the plan document. Um, persons who are consultants. Um, the next thing, uh, one of the key things I wanted to point out, um, that we're trying to propose, um, is maybe a new look at regional connectivity. So on this diagram, um, you can see the pink lines are kind of major roadway corridors. The dashed lines are corridors that we hope to, um, establish. So key thing is connecting Waikia Street, um, from the freeway, uh, connected in down through the district to, uh, Campbell Industrial Park. So that's been on the books for a long time and that's, um, we see that it's real important for the future of Kalailoa. Um, the other, uh, big thing is the, um, idea of if rail gets extended through, through, uh, westward, Eva, um, what route would it take? So in the two thousand and six, the city, um, established a locally preferred alternative to come down through the heart of Kalailoa and then swing back up to Kapale. So that's this, uh, that's this, uh, dashed, um, blue line, which I've just tried to highlight. So that, that's, that's, uh, that's two here. Um, what we're proposing is that instead of that, um, transit actually takes a more direct route along the Roosevelt Avenue. And this would allow to serve, um, development both in Kapale, uh, more directly as well as Kalailoa, um, providing pretty good access. You know, the, the one, uh, the one issue with this two thousand and six locally preferred alternative is it, it swings through a lot of the blocks, the development blocks, it cuts kind of diagonally through them, uh, in, in many ways. And I think at that time, there wasn't a big understanding of kind of what the technology is or where it could be. So while that route might, might have been appropriate and could still be appropriate for a, uh, maybe an A grade bus transit system um, or tram, I think if, if we're looking at the elevated high-capacity, uh, transit corridor system, it would certainly be a lot more appropriate along a, a corridor like Roosevelt. Um, again, we're just proposing this, um, we're floating it out as a concept for discussion and for consideration. Um, obviously, the city and the state, you know, would all, uh, have to be, uh, consider this. Um. So again, there, um, in the master plan, there's a lot of information there, a lot of, uh, good renderings. Um, one thing I did want to point out is that we have a consultant on board to help us with the next step of, of, of that, which is to look at the, uh, infrastructure, sort out the future demands for power, um, look at the roadway alignments. So getting the roadway alignments, future roadways importance that we know right away so that we're, we know where we can establish the utilities. Um, and so Nancy Chappell was working with our consultant, Arm Tal, on that. And, um, we're going to be reaching out to a lot of the stakeholders, um, in coming months. Um, and then this is also going to fold into the work that the Navy and KICO are doing and the funding that we've been, uh, appropriated by, from the federal government and the legislature. Um, so I, I did now want to switch gears to talk about the administrative rules, um, and the changes that we've made to it. Again, we've made a lot of, a lot of changes relative to previous drafts of the rules. Again, we want to acknowledge, uh, detailed review and assistance by, um, our community stakeholders, including Honey Gentry. Uh, we spent a lot of time with them. Our overall goal, um, as we kind of took a look at, at the rules, was to simplify the implementation of it, um, get it more consistent with other HCD processes in other districts. So make sure that, that, um, it's a lot easier and of course, make it, um, more consistent with the city. Um, when we can, trying to, um, adopt more consistent, um, definitions and approaches. Um, so, you know, we're looking at, um, again, examples are like roadway classifications. We're trying to adopt more of the city terminology, um, in terms of complete streets, definitions and, um, um, referring, for example, to the, uh, city, uh, Department of planning permitting on, um, their review of street trees, for example. So we've taken out all of our preferred, uh, street tree species. And then we're just going to, uh, work with the city on that. Um, in terms of environmental, um, rules, uh, we've tried to adopt more flexible green building standards. Um, previously, we referenced lead, the leadership for environmental and, uh, uh, design. And, uh, so we're now, we're going to make it a lot more flexible. Um, we had some ideas, suggestions, uh, for example, to, um, drainage is a big issue in this area. So there's a lot of land that's, uh, needs to be used for stormwater retention basins. Um, in Maryland, we've, uh, we, we saw that actually they count this as open space. So if it's designed in such a way that can be used for recreation with, uh, gentle slopes, then it, it can help, uh, be an amenity also. So trying to incorporate things like that. And one of the big things we did was again, remove the off-street parking minimums, uh, to be aligned ourselves with, uh, the city ordinance, uh, from, uh, twenty twenty, just as we've done in the other districts of Kakako. So again, taking out the off-street parking requirements. Uh, this view on the right, this is a Kulu, um, the new Gentry fiscal, uh, housing development that's, uh, coming up. Um, again, in terms of permit streamlining, um, uh, here in this, in this table, the, uh, on the left, you have the example of the different types of work, uh, types of construction activities that could occur. In the center column, you have the current rules. And in the right column, you have the proposed rules. So again, like what we've been doing in the other districts, um, we've been trying to actually, um, create a more finer-grained, um, set of, uh, permit types that more closely aligns with the types of activities. So that's a big thing. We pulled in the renovation permit that we, uh, that we've adopted in Kakako. Um, again, same thing adding in, um, for some work, uh, you know, if you're getting a city building permit and you're just doing minor electrical, uh, work, for example, you don't even need to get a, a permit from us. Um, and the big thing, uh, that we did for the development improvement permits, um, in Kalailoa, um, currently, it's all based on parcel size. So if you have a lot that's greater than forty thousand square feet, uh, you're automatically required to get a development permit, no matter what you're doing. So that's why last, uh, last month, uh, we were talking about the, uh, parcel ten, for example, uh, my, pretty minor fence, fence work. So now, um, it's, it's actually tied to the, uh, project size, so the disturbance area. And we've increased it a little bit, uh, up to thirty-five, the threshold is a little greater than in Kakako, uh, since thirty-five thousand square feet, what we're proposing. Uh, in Kakako, it says the threshold is twenty thousand square feet and that's basically to account for the different scale. Um, so again, permit streamlining, the, the thing that we're doing. Um, other things that we're doing is the overlay zones. So, um, we've added a Saratoga Main Street frontage. So this is a concept that we've been carrying through, um, in previous drafts. And again, that's to, um, mainly to ensure an active, um, kind of main street, uh, concept, active pedestrian environment along Saratoga. Um, we are trying to make it a little more flexible so that it's not necessarily just retail, just shops, but just, you know, the key thing that we want is just act, activity on it. So that, so we, we're making it a little more flexible than previous drafts. Also, the Eva Battlefield, um, that's one thing. Um, we've also created overlay zone to reinforce the, um, treatment, historical treatment and cultural, uh, landscape treatment of, of that district and make sure that they follow a shifty, uh, regulations and, um, it kind of reinforce the preservation of and interpretation of the key sites in this area. In terms of the regulating plan, um, we, we've actually simplified it. Um, we're burning it a lot more closer to what it was before. So you may recall that in previous, uh, drafts, we had, um, split the T three transit zone into residential and a mixed-use zone. Uh, so now we're, actually reverting back to just a single T three mixed-use zone. So it's a lot closer to what it is currently. Um, and here you can see that in the orange. Um, in green is a T two, that's the rural area, um, that hasn't changed much. Uh, T four is general urban, so that's a little more, uh, a little higher heights. Um, seventy-five feet height rather than sixty feet height, uh, building heights and a little more density. And then T five is the urban center. And, uh, that's a dark purple. And so we've actually, relative to the previous drafts, we've added kind of an urban center area um, between Roosevelt and Saratoga. Um, previously, it was all kind of concentrated in the area in the triangle below uh, Saratoga, uh, between Enterprise and Midway. So we're adding a little more density, uh, closer to Roosevelt um, with the idea that if, if rail transit does end up on Roosevelt, then you want that higher density around, around the rail stations to kind of bring people into the district. Um, we've also added special districts, uh, for the Department of Hawaii and Homeland. So that's SD three, that's in this kind of light tan color, uh, light beige, um, as well as the previous districts that we had for the military areas and for the airport, which we don't have in our jurisdiction. So again, this, uh, the changes to regulating plan, it's a lot more incremental. Um, a lot closer to the twenty-two rules than what we had before. And again, mixed use, um, a lot more mixed use districts, which could include industrial, um, and, and, um, light industrial uses. Um. With our land use table, um, again, we've simplified the presentation of it. Um, again, it's a lot, uh, it's, it's more similar to the existing land use table than, um, than maybe some of our previous drafts. Uh, that's a good input. Make sure that we have definitions. We try to improve the definitions where we can. Um, and again, our, our rules are pretty flexible. Um, you know, we allow most uses in most of our districts, um, except for, uh, the T two rule. Um, as for the thoroughfare plan, um, the key things that we've tried to do, uh, or that we're kind of highlighting, again, we still have the Waikia Street extension. That's this dashed green line. Um, again, connected to Molokole, street extension. Um, this yellow, this is Saratoga Avenue. Again, this is our main street. Um, we would see Saratoga get extended to Coral Sea. Um, the one thing we are proposing is that, um, for the state, uh, right away from north-south, um, you know, from Koalakai Parkway, uh, potentially. Um, and then the city right away, east-west through Geiger, uh, connection to Geiger Road. These two roadways pass through the Eva Battlefield, uh, historic, uh, site. That's this dashed line over here on, on the right. And so we're suggesting and we're going to, we intend to work with city and state to kind of reevaluate those. So having those major roadways pass through the, the site. So having those major roadways pass through the the site could um. Um, I guess compromise some of the integrity of some of those historic resources, so. Uh, we wanna uh maybe look at converting those um from. Roadways to o- other uses. Um, one thing I just wanna point out, we did get uh feedback at the neighborhood boards. You know, previously, we had, uh, in this draft, for example, we had taken out. The connection between Kyone uh Lula Boulevard and Tripoli Road. On on the east end, uh, the district. Um, we heard at Ema Neighborhood Board that that's actually really important, they want access to the beaches in Kalailoa. So we're gonna look at uh, trying to see if we can maybe put that back in. Um, and then when we went to the Kapalei Neighborhood Board, uh, they indicated that the connection from Olae Street uh on the on the west side of the district. Um, is also important uh for emergency access. So that's another thing that we're gonna, we're gonna look at. Um, comments to date, um, again, we did receive comments uh s- from the city, Board of Water Supply, Department of Planning and Purbing. Some really good comments, thank you. Uh, on the fire department, comments from Hiko. Hunt uh submitted, uh, again, we've been working with Hunt and and Gentry, also submitted uh later uh last last night. Um, they submitted comments, um, but we've been working with them very closely. Um, and then we also received some uh good comments from the State Department of Transportation that uh we need to incorporate. Um, we are expecting some late comments from the City Department of Transportation Services. Still yet. Um, and then just input from the neighborhood board, again, uh, we went to the Ema Neighborhood Board. Uh, they uh questioned about, you know, um, affordable housing. Um, wanted us to look at median income levels. Uh, there was just some suggestion to conduct an updated transportation survey. Uh, in downtown Kalailoa, um, with the, uh, I guess the Kalailoa Business Association. At the Maka Kilo Kaplei Honokai Halla Neighborhood Board, um, they discussed. You know, allowing for more coordinated cycling activities, you know, bicycle roads. Uh, discussion about disaster pre- preparedness, resilience hubs. Yeah, um, and also concern about brushfire hazards. And if, you know, this development could be used to kind of reduce that hazard. Um, they are big uh in supportive underground utilities. Uh, and I guess they passed resolutions in previous years for undergrounding. So that that's one thing that uh we have to consider. Um, also use of native wine plants, um, and then another comment regarding uh. Not allowing variances to affect the quality of life and the environment. So um from here, um, again, today, uh, we have the presentation hearing. Um, our intention as of now is to. Um, incorporate all the comments and try to turn around and another draft of the planning rules within about two weeks. So that that's a gonna be a big task, um, but we're working towards that. Um, decision-making hearing uh just September fourth. Um, subject to your questions, that concludes uh my presentation. And.
Chair, I have a question. Chair, I have a question. Oh, yeah, uh, Vice Chair Yi.
Um, so, you know, one of the main elements or one of the important elements that was brought up at Soontown Hall meetings was about the underground utilities. Was this addressed in the master plan?
Um. In the rules, we actually.
Cause I couldn't find it in the rules.
Pardon?
I couldn't find it.
Oh, um, so in the rules, uh.
Okay, maybe missed it, sorry.
Yeah, it's uh, we have a, I think it's enough through the site development section, um. But so it's in the rules, but it's 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 very, it's pretty um general. And so we focus on kind of onsite utilities. And so I think we say, you know, or if if possible, essentially, um.
I think that's what I saw too.
Yeah.
So was there any comments in regards to that? You, other government agencies and regarding uh requiring, eliminating overhead electricity and looking at underground.
Yeah, I I.
Utilities.
I, okay, yeah, so I'm still, we're still working through the the government, the agency comments. I don't recall seeing that uh as an agency comment. Um, I know from the development community, um, they do see the. Cost issues associated with overhead utilities, uh, with underground utilities. And so. I think the previous, the current language says, you know, that shall be under grounded. Um, I think, again, we tried to pull back, and then I think we even were trying to pull back so that uh we focus on onsite. Utilities being undergrounded, but I think there are even issues with that, um.
I'm sorry, I just wanna let the record reflect that Secretary Alpo arrived at nine eleven A M.
Um, other, can I just add to that? Sure, if I can. So Vice Chair Yi, you know, the the top, the subject of whether or not utilities in Kalailoa. Should be under grounded or uh above ground. Has been discussed a lot, I mean, in internally.
Right.
And then I think as um, as uh Ryan pointed out, um, at the Maka Kilo Neighborhood Board, they definitely. They have a position on on the underground utilities and did a resolution. When we were at the Maka Kilo Neighborhood Board or virtually on the Maka Kilo Neighborhood Board. Um, I I did say this, um. I I I think um, in the past, you know, my preference has been to do underground utilities. Just because of resiliency, um, uh, you know, less subject to climate and weather. And all those things, and and from a planning perspective, you know, I think it makes a lot of sense uh the way we've done it in other districts, just to underground. Um. But it comes down to a matter of cost versus cost versus do we, you know. Versus the, you know, Navy electrical grid in Kalailoa. Goals, the, my preference would be if we had the money to do underground. But I don't think we're gonna have enough money uh to do underground for the whole district. So I think it's gonna come down to the cost, how much we have available. And uh what's better, that you're having above-ground lines or with connected up to the equal grid? Or the Navy system, which is, which is failing. Uh, and I think uh Ryan mentioned that the estimated cost of of. Underground is about two to three times more than above ground. So it kind of may come down to a practical uh practical solution. And although we have have or will be receiving some additional monies from feds, uh Navy. Uh, that those, that funding is finite as well. Finite as well, and legislative funding, uh. We're probably gonna have to ask for more funding for the electrical upgrades, whether or not we'll get it is another story. So I think it really comes down to practical consideration.
Yeah, so my personal opinion is that we should try to get the additional legislative funding, if possible. Go underground.
I I think.
The next session.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, as as Ryan mentioned, we're um. Their their team is is gonna, is starting the work on the infrastructure master plan. It's gonna look at uh electrical and roadways and drainage, but particularly on electrical. So I think we'll have a better idea of what that uh, the extent of the electrical upgrades need to be. But we could go in and request, uh, let's say, another twenty-seven million, which is gonna kind of match what the the Navy has put in so far. And uh see if that goes, it 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 has to go get past D bed, get past B N F. And then be approved by the governor to get in the budget, but we can't ask for that, um. When we get to the General Authority agenda, we can kind of talk about what our legislative priorities are for next session, so we we can. But even with that extra money, let's say we ask for matching for the twenty-seven. Uh, I'm still not sure who can, I don't, I I should say I'm I'm positive we can, it's gonna have to be above ground. But I I I still think it's better than the uh current Navy grid, which is failing, unreliable, and. Reliable electricity is the number one sort of impediment or infrastructure need uh for any kind of development, whether it's housing or. Does that answer your question, Mr.?
Yeah, was, but you said power, the power grid is very important for any development going forward.
Yeah. And and the, if I may, the the references are section fifteen two one five sixty-two. D seven. Sorry, uh, sorry, E, fifteen two one five sixty-two E.
Members, do any other members have questions for the staff report? I see Member Evans. Uh, Member Evans, you're muted.
Thank you, Chair Higa. Um, just to add to um Vice Chair Yi Shi Yi's concern and Executive Director Nakamoto's. Um, and uh Ryan's additions, I I think maybe we should focus on. Uh, safety and resi- resilience and reliability. And however uh that can be achieved best at the cost that's available. Because I know that um Hiko is starting to put a lot of uh metal uh. Poles up because they're stronger, they're fire resistant. Uh, and also they're starting to put instead of bare lines, insulated lines up. And those, uh, should they, uh, unfortunately blow down, don't, because they're insulated. They're not going to be as likely to uh start fires. So uh it doesn't address the aesthetic preference, but it does. Uh, it would give some choices and flexibility in terms of cost to achieve the safety and reliability goals. That I'm sure uh probably should be our first uh priority. Thank you, Chair.
Great, thank you, Member Evans. Member Lindstone?
Uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, great, you know, I think it's uh. The underground utilities as a priority is critical, especially with increasing severe weather patterns. And also for the safety of this community that uh we're building for. Um, and so let, you know, legislative funding, um. Continue on that path to try to support this. Um, but I also have a a question about um the R one recycled water. In reading the um department, um, the Board of Water Supplies testimony. Um, are these lines currently in for the potable water? Or is this also something that's going to need legislative funding to put in additional dual lines for the potable water for for irrigation?
Chair five me? Yes, um, so, um, Member Lindstone, um. The the, the R one purple lines, I I believe that it kind of goes, uh, it's outside the district. Uh, it's outside the district and it services primarily, I believe, the Barbers Point Golf Course right now. Um, primarily, there could be other users as well. Um, secondly, there is a lot of capacity in the um, uh, for R one water. Uh, I I've spoken with um um Director, uh, Mr. Mao about it, and there is capacity. Uh, Ryan and I have been, you know, looking uh for a while about how to get that R one line from where it is right now. We're in into the district um for irrigation purposes. Uh, what accelerated, I think, our concern about that and trying to get into the district is the city's. Uh, acceptance of the four hundred acres uh from the Navy uh for park usage. So um. Ryan and I and others were at a, at the governor's recent federal fund summit. And uh I saw Ernie Lau there, and then um we talked about a little bit and. Uh, for an idea that uh the three of us and others could get together. And apply for a federal discretionary grant money to bring that R one line into the district. To service the 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 um park and and Fisher Park, City Park, and other things. And Director Thielen was very supportive of it. So I think we have a meeting set up with uh Ernie Lau, Director Thielen, and internally. I think next week to talk about that idea. It is top of mind for me because I think the more we can use um. Non-potable uh res- water resources like that, then we can reduce the consumption of potable water in the in the district. So um, that that's our idea for our one uh water, Member Lindstone. And I'll keep the board informed of our progress on that, but um. I I I promised Director Thielen that um H C D will take the lead on the grant writing on this, so. We'll keep the board informed, Member Lindstone.
I have a question. So on, in the master plan on page twenty-nine and thirty, there's the mention that the water system is leaking. Where it is supposed to have daily water flow of two point two million gallons per day, um, but is only flowing one. Million gallons per day according to water meter readings. And it's mentioned that there will be a study to sort of see what's going on there. Do we have a ETA on? What we'll find out about the water system there?
So um, we've been working, uh, Hunt has been meeting a monthly kind of with the Kalailoa Water Company, and we've started attending those meetings. Um, and as I recall, they, I don't think they've started their study yet, but they're they're working, they're working on it. Um, for Enterprise.
Okay. If, as as the results of that study uh come up, if they could be relayed to the board, that would be.
Okay, yeah, and you know, they're they're looking at upgrading uh kind of the water line on long enterprise again to i- identify. Um, the leaks, and it, I think they may have a more phased approach to implementation.
Great, thank you. Uh, members, any other questions before we go to public testimony?
Yes, Chair.
Uh, so I have a few questions and a couple of comments. Um, so I I just wanted to kind of get some clarity on a few things since I'm coming in. I understand that, you know, the board has been involved over the years, that's good to hear. Um, as far as the rules go, is there a separate chapter for affordable housing? Um, that that, or a separate chapter that governs affordable housing in the in the district? I didn't see that.
Uh, we have a separate reserve housing rules.
Okay, and that applies to the district.
Yeah, I think there's a separate sort of rules for Kalailoa.
Okay.
So there's Kakakoo, and then there's there's Kalailoa.
But that's not being amended.
Yeah, but we're we're not amended that.
Okay. Uh, and then. Uh. I wanted to just clarify on that, um, the transects, so under the figure five in the the rules, that's the site development standard. Um, and we list the maximum F A Rs for transite. Uh, up to a maximum, not three point five, in the urban center zone, T five.
Yeah.
So so that's just the maximum as it states, right? So if development, there's no minimum threshold if you're in that transect.
No, so that, and that's one of the changes that we've done, so we've taken out the minimums. So previously, there were minimum, and it was expressed in like units, minimum units or minimum commercial square feet. So we've taken taken all that out.
Okay.
Um, yeah, the one comment that we've actually had from a. Uh, Hunt is that actually we're. Height limited, um, so the height, the building heights that we have here are actually constrained, uh, there usually be used F A R. So they think. You know, they could use additional height. Uh, to to max out the actually R on that we have currently.
But so the the heights that are regulated here are, is that due to the airport height restriction?
Uh, no, not not really, so uh it's just we haven't changed, we didn't, uh, we didn't change the height limits. Uh, again, uh, T three, I think it's like sixty feet. Uh, T four, I think seventy-five, and T five is ninety. So the height limits, um. We do have a figure in the, you know, plan that talks about height limits, but they're more constrained just close to the runways. And then it comes slopes up. And then it goes up to a base of like a hundred and you know, so a hundred and seventy-five feet around, around there.
Okay. So is that something you're looking at now?
Um, potentially. I, we, we have to, we have to look at it. More.
But you, you did receive comments from someone.
Yeah, I think Hunt, Hunt noted that they could use more.
Okay. And then you mentioned in the old draft, the railroad.
Yes.
Wrapping down Saratoga and then coming up through some kind of, I guess, like mid-block in some areas. So that, the current plan or this one update have any sort of like route preservation measures considered? You know, if you're cutting through certain properties versus following just the, the right away.
The existing plan and I think H C D A to date has not or the, the city, I don't think anybody has been preserving the right way. The current two thousand and six L P A. Of, for Roosevelt, we also, for Roosevelt Route, we haven't identified, we have not identified any kind of corridor preserve preservation plans. I think that would be subject to working with the city on that route.
Okay, but if someone comes in for development, are you analyzing that potential route? Well, I guess both routes, but primarily the one that is shown that could go through along Saratoga through some of the, the big blocks where
Uh, I, I'm not aware, I, I have to check with staff on that, on kind of the history of that.
Okay.
I don't know if that's been as much of a consideration. Today.
Okay, yeah, I think, I mean, it's pretty good to know because you know, yeah, I, I know this plan has a couple of different options and you're recommending Roosevelt as a potential alternative extension, but it's not, since it's not set.
Yeah.
You know, there, that could be closing out another option that, for whatever factor might determine, determine the most viable in the future, an extension. So just.
And, and I think, you know, if and when the city, you know, looks at these extensions, you know, they'll have to look at the right way and look at what's available today again versus two thousand and six is a very different environment. And what development has occurred. You know, that route was supposed to go to Golubacan Street, which is still, I think we still want to see that connection made, so.
Okay. And then I was wondering if you could give a little more history about why there's so much recreation or open space? I'm, I'm assuming that has to do with the Navy conveyance of land restrictions, because there's really only kind of a, in, in overall acreage terms, a small section of developable area under the the transects that are under, I guess, like H C D A review up, up along, you know, Roosevelt. Have them.
Yeah.
The majority of the district is either in one of those restricted air subjects or overlays or, or recreation.
Yeah, that, again, yeah, it goes back to the conveyance. I, I would say a lot, a lot of that goes back to the brack process when I think at that time, you know, it was slated to give
Okay, so it's more to do with, with the conveyance restrictions.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say so.
The board.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so I guess just kind of in, in overall context, then I was thinking that you know, it's good to hear about some of the issues with the height limiting or influencing the F A R, because overall it's seeming, you know, similar low and especially in comparison to how much limited developable area there is in the district. It seems like we'd want to kind of maximize that, that small amount of land and especially if you're trying to justify the extension of rail service there, it might not necessarily be, you know, enough ridership generated to make the case. And, and so I know you're saying the transect F A Rs are a maximum and it does seem like, you know, maybe not maximizing out the, either that urban or most intense tran, transects. And it seemed like along the Saratoga Main Street, there was like varying transects, which would have different types of, of densities along there, which might also kind of impact where you look to place a station and how that Main Street would actually like look and function if you have, you know, different type of transects.
Yeah, so the, the one thing I think we've heard from the development community and that I think we're trying to address is that we, we may have been a little more idealistic in terms of the type of, the amount and the type of development that, you know, this area could support. So for example, if you look at some of the renderings, which actually in the plan, which are based on some of the early concepts, early design concepts, I think the idea, the thought was that this would all be, you know, mixed use. Right, that it's a mostly urban neighborhood with pocket parks. Mid-rise development. And so that was thought Saratoga, right, the whole, the whole length. You know, developers, they've been indicating that it's, they've had, you know, trouble designing or even, you know, programming. Commercial store for retail, even along small portions of Saratoga, for example. And our previous iterations of the rules also, you know, took out industrial from a lot of these, these districts and, you know, was trying to focus on really building it up to the higher density. I think we're trying to now to maybe support or facilitate kind of a more incremental approach to development where, you know, maybe over the shorter term, over the nearer term, they're looking at more, you know, light industrial mixed use development. Just to get the redevelopment going and get, you know, activity and, and more activity in Kalawal. And then over time, as that changes, you know, it could start to incrementally densify. So maybe like Kakako might be a good example, right? So originally it was houses and, and, and more agriculture development. And then over time, you know, the light industry came in, you know, that's a lot of what we see now. And then now we're in this next phase of development where you have a lot of the powers, towers going up and a lot of the more commercial retail, but you know, this has taken, you know, a hun, a hundred years.
Yeah, I guess the concern is that there's a, a small amount of really developable land and even within the, I think, T three transect, some of that's been already developed. You know, somewhat low density. And so that even further constrains what's possible there. And, you know, are we not promoting enough density for the areas that and, and landowners who want to do that higher density versus where it's indicated right now and, and, you know, a couple of limited spots. And then I know as well, like you have the plan for the infrastructure next stop and I guess I didn't see any sort of phasing plan incorporated into the master plan that might help be informed by this special master plan for like targeted investment areas, maybe guiding them towards certain transects to help try and build up those first and then move on to the next area where you think it's most appropriate.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good, good feedback. I think we can look at, look into that.
Yeah, I guess the fear is that if, if we don't create maybe that additional flexibility by upping the density, we won't have the opportunity in the future because of the, the limited land area. I don't know how many more updates, you know, the board is going to be able to consider on the master plan before that area is already developed for the next fifty to hundred years.
If I could offer a comment, I think we have two conflicting pieces of testimony, right? Hunt companies would prefer that certain parcels be downzoned and the Honolulu Department of Planning and Permitting would prefer that parcels be upzoned. My personal preference is to go in the direction of upzoning. I think that the only way that we can justify the infrastructure investments is if there is the sufficient capacity for dense development, especially along a potential future rail corridor. So I would encourage the, the staff to look carefully at this and where possible, along Roosevelt Avenue to err in the direction of upzoning, because if developers don't build, that's fine, but give them the option to move in that dense direction. Because without that density, not only can we not justify infrastructure improvements, but we won't be able to justify potentially a rail corridor in the future. So that would be my comment to the staff. Members, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to public testimony. Since the notice of the public hearing was published on Thursday, July fourth and Friday, July fifth, twenty twenty-four, and written testimony invited, as of today, the H C D A has received seven written testimonies. All seven testimonies were provided for comment only. We will now take verbal public testimony. Speakers will be called upon to testify in the order in which they have signed up. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes each. Since each authority member has or will be given a copy of any written testimony that you might have provided, please refrain from reading your written testimony and instead summarize your comments in the time that you have available. When you are called, please clearly state your name and any organization that you are representing. The first person signed up is Tada Rojas. If you could please come up and limit your testimony and comments to three minutes.
What I'm saying, members, okay. Do you know why this process is a virtual public hearing for such a huge development? And we're, we did the research, we're looking, and by the way, your attachments that you added to the website was only added a few days ago, like hundred pages, hundred forty-one pages, one, two hundred pages. So can you explain why there's not more to discuss? Because it's pretty much from hearing it, even from the last time, it seems like you're kind of already ready. You just push this forward and everything else for future rail corridors and density, more development and everything. So do, do what we say even matter? I mean, can I ask that before we even start? Because I was expecting really a public hearing to be more than just a three minute testimony.
Sure. If you could end any of your testimony.
So there's no answer. I mean, we really, we're trying to step up and, you know, do our due diligence and we're, we're met with so much obstacles and even to provide our comments. So can we at least just understand the process why it's only three minutes?
Everyone is limited to three minutes. And this time you have, you have a minute fifty-two.
Oh, no, no, this is not right. I'm just setting up. That was my question before.
You have, you have three minutes.
If we could restart Ms. Rojas' time when she's.
So you won't answer why? The, the process is only three minutes?
That's, that's the time we give to everybody, Ms. Ross. That's the time we allow for everyone. And, and you can also submit written testimony.
But there's no way to even have a broader discussion.
You can, you can submit written testimony. Every, everyone has, had the opportunity to submit written testimony. And if it's, so if it's, the testimony is going to take more than three minutes, I think we suggest that you submit written testimony.
But the thing is like a, a dialogue for, for the public community to happen so that we can hear people's, you know, more and we can read it, yeah, but then how does it affect, you know, it's like a, should be like a town hall type of thing. Well, that's my, my idea was a public hearing, like a, like a town hall.
Sure. I mean, my understanding though is this community planning process included consultations with the neighborhood board meetings, which are three hours long.
Okay, we were there and it's only three minutes again. Oh, no, it's actually like two minutes or two minutes or three minutes and that's it. And there's no dialogue.
The neighborhood board members are permitted to have dialogue with people who present.
No, oh, yeah, for them, but not the public. So when, when it was open to the public, we only had like three minutes again. So there's no way to like even dialogue with, with regards to.
Okay. Would you mind starting your testimony?
Okay.
And, I mean, can we start?
Okay, so I have here years worth of all of these practices. This is the Honolulu wastewater. This is the Ever watershed. This is Ho'opili built on prime land and with all the cultural, you know, documentation needed as well as like the rail one. We have Ho'opili here, the rail, Eva Longridge Master Plan, the natives, right? One intention, our intensive archaeological survey and test excavations for that Marina project, which turned into the wave pool somehow along that is having passed, yeah, but so wastewater. This whole thing is pretty much full of without saying it, you know, Pukai Kaka waste, which there breaks over capacity and it flows to the sea and it contaminates. Right now, there is, you know, going to be opposition in Keahua, Hawaii Island, that development in Kaua to avoid there, Makina Maui, they had that one, Koloa Kawai and then right here in Oahu Laie, says so in your water plant, in your plans, that all the water just flows to the ocean. We know what it does, these developments does to the near shore. The Limu is fun. This is the Limu watershed. Water, B O E, recent news. I know you say you're going to work with Ernie Lau, P F A S contaminated. Did you see that today? That they're gonna, it's now in the I A L well, that the plume is moving through. Yes, I know they have their own and it's leaking the water system, but still we're in a water crisis. And they actually want the Navy, who you want to form a relationship with for like the past seven months to use the eighteen million that you don't need to use by eighteen, by September twenty twenty-four. And you want the Navy to remediate and they want the B O E wants the Navy to remedy and release all the info related to spill. So they didn't even release all the information regarding the spill, the contamination, the water. So the Navy, their water leaks, contamination, it's in your D B E D T report that came out that, you know, follow up in June, how you guys didn't want that area because it's so contaminated. I know you put in there in the presentation for Hurripon, that Hurripon is contaminated. And they lied about it, says clean. And then you know, that third party found that it still was contaminated, had all the the toxic things from the Navy still in there. Native Hawaiian endangered plants and people. Native Hawaiian, so do you know who this is, Hawaiian soul? If not, that means that you're so out of touch of what Hawaii is. This is George Helm. So in nineteen sixty-five, you know, in Kahoe, they, the Navy broke the water table on Kahoe Olave and then finally thirty years is finally given back, one man. One man. So it's the water, water table, cap rock, you know, it's the cap, it's there in our ever plains, electricity, the Hiko hook up. I'll talk about this is so important. Did you know we just had a rolling blackout warning in July and also in January of this year? So why is there so much continuous overdevelopment? In the end, it's just going to be mere. So again, rolling blackouts for having in Hiko.
You have thirty seconds.
Yeah, so in Hiko.
You have thirty seconds.
Yeah, so in Hiko is an issue, electricity, water, contamination, sewer. And in addition to the cultural protection needed of Ako Kooa, Manu Manu Limu. And by the way, affordability on the way here, as I left my house, left my house, what I see at the bus stop, a man sticking his head into the rubbish can, looking for cans to, you know, recycle. So just to keep that in mind, that's the result of this.
Sorry, Ms. Rojas, I, I, I do have a question for you, which will allow you to continue talking. I think the board members understand that all of these issues are interrelated. So I guess my question for you would be, what do you want this board to do?
I would like for you all to recognize, one, the Aina, the land rights, one. Two, the land and the water rights for the Maoliola, the health of the people and the environment. There are ways in the key, key technical word is like regenerative, regenerative like. There are ways in the key, key technical word is like regenerative, regenerative, like tourism, regenerative development. But the thing is, if you go back and just decolonize, decolonize your mindset and look into those ways to do what you said, provide, you know, economic opportunities through not overdevelopment, but for the betterment of the community and the people, because you said development, community. Scratch off the word development, what are you left with? Community. You're talking about, I heard you say density. Dense, I mean, it's like, for a few, there, there has to be common sense into this whole process and planning here. Thank you for just letting me allow it just to be heard, even though I I really hope it changes and it can actually stop all of this. Because if you look back at what has been documented and left in the library, just to be there on a shelf or nowhere to look at again. But it needs to be there. I got their permission to, to bring it here for visual. If you go back here and you go back to Eva neighborhood, Eva, our neighborhood board meetings, which I did, all of them, you can see what's in here and it's erroneous when it says fancy of no significance. That, that's, that's erroneous because you can see the effects afterwards. You gotta go back and so not continue this process. We see it with the wind turbines, we heard it about glyphosate, chemicals poisoning, we see it the C R B, all of this happening. And if you just, if we just stop the process and then reframe the mindset to decolonize mindset, you can do it. Put all this effort and this study, but join it in that because development only, it only benefits the developers, the few. It's, we're literally gonna be, need to scrounge in the rubbish can, you know, because it's unaffordable here. And I know you know this, I, I know you, like, the background, the history, so. Mahalo for that question, because that's the only way I can speak a little more in the process.
In the spirit of dialogue, Ms. Rojas, I'd, I'd love to just meet with you. We can sit down over coffee and talk through some of these things. I do just wanna offer, I think the members of this authority have to balance a variety of considerations, right? So um, one of the considerations is in the absence of the development of affordable housing, uh, we will continue to have the loss of thirty to fifty thousand people every year who leave our state. Um, so it's tricky, right? You can either say we stop all development, we don't build any more affordable housing or housing at all in the ever plain. And the ultimate result of that, as far as I can tell, will be local people leaving, native Hawaiians leaving. So I, I'm happy to continue this dialogue with you. I think it's better if we sit down. Sometimes these venues are not appropriate for it, and I agree with you. Um, board members, council, chamber meetings, legislative meetings can be hostile and not appropriate for, not appropriate settings for a robust dialogue, and I share your frustration. I do think, though, when we approach these settings, we have to approach so with the attitude that most of the people involved in the system would like to see something better. But there are pressures that we all deal with and have to kind of mitigate the best that we can. So I personally know every member of this authority. I think that all of the members of the authority and the staff do care about these issues. Maybe they don't always align perfectly with what you would like to see, and I don't think any two people perfectly align in what they want to see. Um, but I do think they're open to having that dialogue, and I personally would love to sit down with you to talk.
Mahalo, because I did hear about what you said about the unaffordability here, but the fact that the twenty percent, by the way, that you guys are gonna put aside, guesstimate six hundred thousand for two bedroom, that is not affordable. So whether you're saying that, you know, this project, this Kalailoa master plan is gonna be unaffordable for the people in our community in which it's gonna be built. Yeah, mahalo.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Rojas. The next testifier signed up to share is Jennifer Bara. Sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
I appreciate that.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Um. Aloha, board members. My name is Jennifer Bara, and I'm a planner at the city and county of Honolulu's Department of Parks and Recreation. Um, on June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, the city and county of Honolulu officially took ownership of approximately four hundred acres of former naval air station lands at Barbers Point for public park and public recreation area purposes. This event marked a historic milestone for the city as the city first applied for these lands back in nineteen ninety-nine. With the transfer of the ownership, the Department of Parks and Recreation faces a monumental task of planning and developing these lands to help serve the recreational needs of the people of Oahu, especially the Eva and Kapalee communities. G P R continues to hear from communities across Oahu about the compelling need for additional public park and recreational space. The lands at Kalailoa present G P R with the unique and rare opportunity to plan and design a significant amount of land for more recreational uses outside of the urban core of Honolulu. Much like the Patsy Team makes Central Oahu Regional Park and Y P O Soccer Complex, some of the parcels at Kalailoa will be destination parks, which require large continuous spaces to accommodate varied recreational activities. That said, G P R does not support any of its Kalailoa lands being used for infrastructure or uses, including roads, detention basins, open space areas, Milwaukee Forests, or utility easements that restrict use or are not directly associated with providing park and recreational opportunities for the public. G P R's comments today are related to the T-two rural transit zone, as all of G P R's properties are designated as T-two. With such a large land area, G P R needs supporting uses that will allow the department to maintain and manage its parks and facilities. These uses include housing for park caretakers, administrative and staff offices, baseyards, and outdoor storage. G P R is unclear if these uses are currently restricted in the T-two zone. Additionally, as a condition of the transfer of the four hundred acres from the federal government to the city, the department agreed to uses set forth in a program of utilization plan, which was accepted by the federal government in nineteen ninety-nine and updated in two thousand eleven. As an example, the program of utilization intends for the department's downtown parcel to be used as a department baseyard and driver training facility. G P R also requests the flexibility to be able to provide the community with a wide variety of recreational opportunities, and G P R intends to seek approval from the federal government to update the program of utilization to include a motorsports park and other uses as deemed appropriate through the master planning process. We ask H C D A to allow G P R the flexibility to allow these types of uses in T-two, as G P R will need to maintain the flexibility to implement uses agreed to in the program of utilization and provide a variety of recreational uses for the community. Beyond what uses are allowed in T-two transit zones, there are also other restrictions, but will limit G P R's ability to provide adequate recreational opportunities. For example, the T-two transit zone limits camping facilities to less than thirty campsites. G P R's popular Bellows Field Beach Park has fifty campsites. Given the amount of access, um, amount of acres transferred to the city, G P R envisions expanding the availability of camping sites in Kalailoa to meet the increase in demand for campsites on Oahu. Um, in conclusion, G P R was not involved in previous stakeholder meetings, and G P R had limited input in the creation of the draft master plan and draft rule amendments. However, now that G P R is one of the larger landowners within Kalailoa, we request the opportunity to establish an open dialogue and work with H C D A to ensure that the master plan administrative rules enable G P R to meet the park and recreational needs of committees surrounding Kalailoa and the larger Oahu community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bara. Uh, Ms. Bara, just a question, was G P R able to submit written testimony?
Um, we were not. We have been working on it, though.
Okay, got it.
And we will, we will this week.
Perfect, thank you. And Director Nakamoto, I know that you'll be in communication with him.
Yes.
Perfect. Um, thank you. The next person signed up to testify is Kahaku Akoi. I, I couldn't see if there's an Akina there.
Aloha, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, um, aloha, Mai Kako. I am Kahaku Akoi, a lineal descendant of the royal families of the House of Kiave, the House of Moana, one of the Konohiki of the six of the Eva Moku. Um, I come from Ma'ili Kukahi, Kukani Loko. Those are my kupuna. I have brought him, them here to this circle to speak with you and your ancestors. Um, I have a lot of questions, and I have to agree with Ms. Tara Rojas, where she stated, oh, I, I forgot to mention, I'm also the um CEO of Kekuanoa Foundation. Um, the work that we do is to continue the legacy of His Royal Highness Mathau Matthew Kekuanoa, of which is the, one of the Konohikis of this Eva plain. First and foremost, you are trespassing on the Land Commission Award of one, one, two, one, six. That is the daughter of Kamehameha. So um, some of my questions are, did you call forward or summon for the heirs of Eva and the heirs of Kekaua Nohe under due diligence? Um, because there are living heirs today. And there are actually one hundred sixty-five Land Commission Awards within the Eva Moku, of which you have not called for or summoned any of them in the paper in order to provide testimony as you trespass over their Land Commission Awards, which we all know are alorio titles, which means they have superior right over any development over these lands. Um, some of my questions, and you can re-watch this later, is um, did H H, did H C D A promote the Twenty Minute City as a Twenty Minute City on their website and language? And um stakeholders, um, as a lineal descendant of the families of Eva and of the Konohiki of Eva, I would like to have names of your consultants and stakeholders in order to serve them a notice that I hold vested alorio title in that Moku in which you are trespassing. Um, there are law, a lot of short-term and negative environmental impacts, and we're not gonna pacify. Um, I also have my masters in science and a bachelor's in psychology, so I'm very much aware of the psychological ramifications that you are proposing here and also the science background to it. I will take more than three minutes because there is no town hall, and I'm letting you know that there's more to this testimony. Um, the short-term effects on this Twenty Minute City is construction emissions. The process of building and retrofitting infrastructure can produce significant emissions from construction equipment, increased traffic from construction, habitat disruption, increased waste, noise pollution, temporary quality decline. Some of your long-term negative environmental impacts are urban heat island effect. When you, it, when you operate in an increased density and you wanna increase it, you reduce the green spaces that can exacerbate the urban heat island effect, leading to higher temperatures in urban areas. Um, other long-term negative impacts on a Twenty Minute City can be resource on intensive infrastructure. Maintaining new infrastructure such as roads and public transportations can be uh resource-intensive, potentially leading to an increased energy consumption and resource depletion. We already seen a detriment on the mountain in um Halehua, Makakilo, that you guys allow for the detriment of a plundering of the resources that belongs to the royal families of Kamehameha. Um, there's also ru- water runoff issues, loss of the green spaces, long-term waste management. There's also detrimental setbacks to Twenty Minute Cities. There's many studies that have already been giving feedback, like the New York Twenty Minute City. There's a high initial cost and financial burden of developing and maintaining these Twenty Minute Cities. In thirty years from now, some of you will be dead and gone, and the children of your grandchildren will have to live with the ramifications. These decisions you're making does not impact your pocket alone, but it creates a detriment to future generations. The implementation challenges that you're gonna be facing, the community pushback, the equity concerns, the dependence on technology, we're going through a water crisis, an electrical rolling blackout with Hiko who was just bought out by Blackstone. Twenty Minute Cities are not what you present them to be. There's evidence that small cities like the one in Songgo, South Korea, they are.
In, in, in the interest of having a dialogue, could you please summarize?
Dialogue, I can absolutely summarize.
Summarize what?
There are promising benefits of Twenty Minute Cities, but there are also potential environmental advantages and disadvantages. They also present significant challenges and potential negative impacts. Addressing these requires transparent governance, inclusive planning, and a balanced approach that considers both short-term and long-term environmental effects. I need the names of your stakeholders, your development, because as a royal family, you are trespassing on my lands. I am a direct descendant of the line of Mathau Kekuanoa, and you are trespassing on my rights as well as hundred fifty-six Land Commission Award families. You are being officially put on notice, and I would appreciate that you consider and execute due process in notifying those families. Either on the paper or on the news, you guys need to do a better job and respect the first people who was here, and it wasn't you guys. Mahalo.
Could we, could you please uh type your email in the chat so that the staff can follow up with you?
They have it, kekuanoafoundation@gmail.com. I had already spoken before as a lineal descendant of the Konohiki.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our next testifier, Haleani Sonoda Poli.
Okay, aloha, um. Okay, so I have a few things. I'm testifying on behalf of Nakia Iowaiha. And we're in opposition to this. Um, I wanna just bring up a few things, um, and that Tara and um that you already brought up, uh, which is, you know, the water crisis. Um, thi- this is a real thing. I don't know where you're gonna, um, what's your long-term plan for water, providing water? I know that two years ago, um, the Board of Water Supply did send out a letter to developers telling them that there may not be water for your develop, development. Um, and um, the rolling blackout is, is an issue. Um, just last night, Coco Marina, the whole shopping center was blacked out. So it's about, I think, at this point, sustainability and whether or not we can sustain further development. Um, the, the other issue I wanna bring up is uh consultation. It's obvious that you have not consulted with um adequately with the parties that have a real um stake in this whole project and, and with all the stakeholders, including the Kanaka Molly community. And I would like to offer that you hold up on any kind of changes to this plan or moving forward until we can have um better consultation process um with uh you folks. Um, three-minute testimonies is not consultation, and this is not a dialogue. Um. And also, I wanna just um bring up about um affordable housing, that uh one in seven homes is vacant, okay? Uh, and the real problem here is the long, uh, the short-term housing rental um um issue. Uh, on Oahu alone, there's a vacancy rate of nine point two percent, which is thirty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-three unoccupied homes on this island alone. It's not a shortage of housing. It's um a shortage of um, of, you know, a accessibility to this housing. Um, and then the problem with the, the terminology affordable housing, that's always been problematic. It's never really well-defined. Um, as Tara had said previously in her testimony, six hundred thousand dollars is not affordable. Um, and we've, we're kinda tired of affordable housing being thrown around like um a, as an excuse to justify destitution of cultural sites, which we know this area is loaded with. Um, we also do know um that because of our previous military occupation on these site, on this proposed area, on this area for the Kalailoa um, uh, plan, uh, that there, there is some real issues with um, uh, PFAS um uh contamination. Um, there was a, I just was at a hearing, uh, uh, uh forum the other night, uh, where we had an expert on PFAS talk about a fire pit that is in Kalailoa, near where the runway is. And um, uh, that would be a real issue in terms of PFAS. Um, PFAS is, is going to be the issue with the water in the future at Kalailoa specifically.
Sorry, so if I, if I hear you right, you have concerns that there's not enough consultation with the native Hawaiian community and concerns about water, including uh potential contaminants like PFAS. We're, we can't let you talk all day because there are other people signed up to testify.
Yeah, and again, yeah, and concerns, this is not a dialogue, right? Being muted, um, when, when my time is up, isn't, that's not a dialogue. I have a real stake. I think everyone here has a real stake in this. We, we are raising our children, we're, we're residents. Um, this is about sustainability, global warming. What kinds of um, have you taken into account like the rising sea levels? And um, the, the water crisis that is going to be, it is, is further exacerbated by the, the climate crisis. So you know, I think, and I would like to put that out there, Ken. Now, if we can have a consultation um with Nakia Iowaiha, with um other stakeholders, where we can have more of a dialogue on this and have more of a say. It is not for developers to decide our future. It is for the people of this island to decide our future. You know, we're the ones that's gonna have to live with the. You know what I mean? We're the ones that's gonna have to live with the decisions, not the developers.
Uh, I, I agree with you. So I'm gonna thank you for your testimony, and we're gonna move on to the next testifier. Next testifier is Pu Pono Ka. Please proceed.
Aloha, my number, my name is actually Summer Yadal. I'm testifying as a, as a individual. I just wanted to echo and mahalo Tara Kahakuakoi and Halelani for their comments, because I, I agree wholeheartedly. As someone who lives at the beginning of the rail line, so I live on Kia Homa Parkway, so this directly affects me as well. The first thing is, of course, the water crisis, right? Um, luckily, we stopped the second wave pool from being built, but just the, the thought of having denser uh, neighborhood is scary, seeing that we already have more how, homes being built next to Farrington Highway and more in Kapolei, that, um, you know, our water is not sustainable for this kind of development. So going back to basics, uh, you asked, turning if we should stop construction, stop development, and yes, we should, because we're not moving in a direction that is sustainable. And of course, with affordable housing, that is non-existent in this plan at all. Um, we're having a conference in November, November twentieth to the twenty-second at the Crock Center over here in Kapolei, and we're gonna be bringing experts from across the nation, from Aspen, Colorado to San Francisco, talking about real solutions to help our local families to stay here and not feel they need to leave Hawaii because of these kinds of developments that you guys are proposing. Um, agree with the fact that this is not sufficient dialogue. This should be a dialogue, and not just a one-sided, we're presenting this and you need to accept it, because developers are able to do this, or the state and city is able to do this. No, you need to consult with the community, the whole community, and all the people who will be involved or who are involved, who have a stake in what you folks are doing. Because this is not just your decision, and it is not gonna affect you unless you live in this area, which we do. So important to have that conversation and to have the, the information that you need to move forward. You guys don't right now, so you, you should not be moving forward. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you, Summer. The next testifier is Ross Stevenson.
Mr. Stevenson, why don't you come up to the front?
Here?
Yeah.
It'll pick me up? Okay. I'll be brief, but I appreciate you folks' time, as, as I said to Ryan before, you guys have a lot of challenges to deal with. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, Ryan and the crew for, uh, putting in a lot of material on the history of, uh, Eva Plain in your latest documentation, because I think it's very important that we have a sense of identity in Eva. Uh, also, um, I just wanted to let the folks know that, uh, we're continuing to do aerial archaeology in Eva, in the Eva Battlefield area. We have two more LiDAR uh, studies that are going to be implemented, because we want to make sure that we can find and better map things like sinkholes that the native Hawaiians have been, uh, concerned about, also structure foundations and all in the area, so that you folks will have more information to make based on, for better decision-making. Uh, the third thing I wanted to, uh, mention, as is mentioned in that, I just saw a, uh, document from the, uh, developer, major developer in the area. A reminder that, uh, the railroad crossings are going to be an issue on the Malcolm Mackay uh, direction. Uh, most transportation for a long time, in the twentieth and nineteenth centuries was uh, why an I diamondhead, but, uh, with the development going into the area, you've got to cross the railroad line. And the fact is, is that, uh, there's no agreement yet on the prioritization of, uh, where crossing's gonna be, and that's really has to be something that will be decided on the Wa Kea and other connections before you folks can really do a lot of your infrastructure work. Uh, second thing I wanted to mention, uh, that I do appreciate talking to the HCDA staff about getting more safety, uh, equipment put along the rail line. Right now, there are only two crossings that have arms to stop traffic, and as the Malcolm Mackay traffic increases, we really have to make sure, especially over near Fort Barrett Road, where you've got two schools right next to the railroad line. We need to have that kind of stuff done, so I appreciate HCDA's, uh, efforts on that. And the last thing I just wanted to say that, uh, apparently the, uh, uh, Department of Transportation wants to incorporate, uh, the section in your document about the historic uh, railway within the right of way. Well, I must state that the right of way would not be there without the rail line. And, uh, we're continuing to have been operating with the Hawaiian Railway Society for forty years, operating a, uh, train on that, uh, uh, line, which is all the way going back. Families just to get out. So, uh, again, I wanna thank you and appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any more testifying? Any testifiers on Zoom or in person? Great. If there is no further testimony, I'll proceed with closing today's hearing. Um, any further comments or discussion from the board? If not, then on behalf of the HCDA authority members and its staff, I thank you for your attendance. A decision-making hearing will be held on Wednesday, September fourth, two thousand twenty-four at nine AM, virtually on Zoom and at the physical meeting site. This public hearing now stands adjourned. The time is ten thirty-nine. Take a five-minute, uh, recess before we come back for the next meeting. Thank you.